Hey, this is Paul Kelly with Allstate Friendly Insurance with a way to save you money or make you money. If we can't save you $300 on any of your insurance, we'll give you $30. We have been in Greenville for almost 30 years at 9801 Wesley Street. Our phone number is 903-274-4949. And the web address is allstatefriendlyinsurance.com. Give my folks a call, see if we can save you 300 on any of your insurance, or we'll give you $30 at 903-274-4949. God bless.
It's seven o'clock and I'll call this special session to order. Let the director reflect that all council members except for Mr. Manning are present at this time. And we're going to have a public hearing, consideration and action on an ordinance imposing moratorium, correct that Mr. Manning just showed up, on building alterations in the central area zoning district, including applications and plans for development, for permits, flats, curations, rezoning, site plans, and new or revised certificates of occupancy. We're going to do a lot of that talking. So this will be our second reading. According to the rules and regulations, we did our first meeting, had the first hearing on that public hearing, and then just earlier this evening, which I think most of you were here for, we had the planning and zoning that had a public hearing. So at this point, I'm going to open it to, do you need to speak again?
Yes.
Just briefly. Okay. When we do open it for a public hearing, it'll be three minutes apiece, and please consider that I hold you three because there could be a lot of people who want to speak. And when you come up, give us your name and your address so that it can be marked in the record. And then Daniel, our city attorney, will put up a little sign that says you've got 15 seconds left, and then he'll tell you you're out of time. So at that point, please terminate your discretion. So before I open it up to a public hearing, Daniel?
If the council would look at the document I passed around a few minutes ago, it's another copy of the ordinance. Obviously, as the mayor said, this is a second reading. If there's anything that needs to be changed in here, it obviously needs to be part of the motion, or we can discuss it. There's two minor changes, one in section two and one in section three. The one in section two, these are things the mayor called and pointed out earlier today that weren't correct. And number two, there was a reference in the beginning part of that section for this applying in the central area zoning district, but further down, at the very last sentence, it used to say within the corporate city limits in Greenville. Obviously, that's not something that we talked about, and it's not what was published in the newspaper. And so that's been changed from the corporate city limits to commercial property in the central zoning district. The other minor change in the next paragraph down, it used to say director of community development, it's not actually a position that we have. That was changed to the main street manager, because Doyle is, this is very close to the things that Doyle already does. And the mayor felt, and I definitely agree, that walking through waiver requests is something that's going to be easier for Doyle. Other than that, there hadn't been any changes since the last time we looked at it. I think last time, we talked about this, there were some questions about what other cities in the area had historical commissions, like the one we were talking about. And I sent an email to the council earlier today that had a list of those. And we don't have a full list of all the cities that have historical commissions. We only have a list of the ones that are part of the certified local government group that's part of the Texas Historic Commission. But almost all of those are centered in the DFW area, or centered around the space, around Austin and San Antonio. Outside of those two areas, I think there's less than 10 other local governments that are part of that program. And the email I sent earlier today actually has a map that shows where every single one of those is, and that also has a listing of all those cities and counties by size. Most of the bigger cities in the state have done, but there are many cities smaller than Greenville that also have that in place. So I can answer any questions about the legal side of this, or the language that's in here, or if there are questions after the public comment, I can answer those at that time.
Anybody on the council have any questions for me? Okay. When I open this public hearing, because we have a good audience here, I'll try and, I think Daryl's got some cards, and we'll go through the cards, and then if you haven't had a chance to turn a card in, I'll ask if anybody else, and then I'll try and alternate one from one side and one from the other, so that everybody gets a fair shot. Are you ready? Sure we got it.
James Satterwhite.
James?
Mr. Mayor, city council members, I'm James Satterwhite, and I reside at 3819 Stonewall Street. In the 1920s, my family helped settle Cache, Texas. This was when cotton was king. Later on, my dad graduated from Greenville High School, and then World War II broke out, and he went to Wichita, Kansas to build airplanes. But he came back home, and he had a general store and filling station where the Enterprise Rent-A-Car is today. Many times, I heard my uncles discussing Greenville. I don't think they liked the mayor much at all, and they sure hated those parking meters, kind of reminded me of Cool Hand Luke. In the 1960s, in fact, it's 1965, I rode one of the last trains into Greenville, Texas to take our place and build a family. Unfortunately, Vietnam came about, and I left Greenville, and it took me 34 years to get back here, but I got here as fast as I could. At that time, well, 1965 stuff, yeah, Greenville's a happening place, there were still a J.C. Penney's, there were Sears, and L.O. Hammond's was a place where a young man could get clothes. By the 1990s, however, the historic downtown Greenville was pretty much a blighted zone. The only thing going for it was Highway 380 and Spur 302. The reason for it, everybody was moving out to Rolling Hills, out to the interstate and Wesley Street. In fact, I bought a bicycle in 2005. A lot of times, I could ride down Lee Street West every 5:30 afternoon around Washington Street and never have a car pass me, or I'd catch a car. Then something happened that was magic. Lillian said it was when beer and wine could be sold. I don't know, but buildings started to be renovated, and it was just a magic that opened up. I'm asking the city council to vote no and not impose a moratorium on alterations to buildings in the central zoning district. I think property owners are savvy enough that they know they're not going to put racist things up, they're not going to put obscene things up. And gosh, guys, we don't need another leader of bureaucracy when we have an established permit process, a planning and zoning commission, and guidelines and regulations are running under books. And I thank you for your time to listen to me. Merry Christmas, everybody. Merry Christmas, Greenville.
Merry Christmas, Mayor. Thank you.
Derek Price.
Derek?
Derek Price, 808 Sahara Drive. Last week, I was really encouraged to hear some discussion about you guys talking about other cities with thriving downtowns around here. And in particular, we've got a neighbor over in Collin County, McKinney, that makes a fantastic model that we can look at. There are a lot of parallels with us in McKinney, they're a county seat, we're a county seat. For a long time, we had similar populations. For a long time, they had lower socio-economic issues, kind of like Greenville does, lower incomes. But they've made some decisions since then that make them a very different community today than what we are. So a couple of things I've noticed about McKinney. One, McKinney embraces public artwork. They don't fight it. They started the McKinney Arts Commission that helps to fund sculptures and fund murals all over town, including in their downtown area. They have a budget of $185,000 a year. They offer 50/50 matching grants to put artwork on private property. So they're a city that not only allows artwork to go up, they're encouraging it, and they're using public money to help shape the direction of that artwork. And McKinney is far from alone in this. You can look at lots of other cities that do the exact same thing with great success. And if we want to see the same results in Greenville, we need to emulate what these other cities are doing. There's no need for us to reinvent the wheel. A second thing I've noticed about McKinney is, as far as I'm aware, they have never passed a moratorium on development. That would be very, very out of character for their community. I'm sad to say, it would probably be in-character for the Greenville City Council to do that, but I'll leave that up to you guys. Now, I love the fact that our city council is paying attention to downtown. That's a wonderful thing. But I am a little bit concerned that some of you may have the idea that we can regulate our way to prosperity, and I don't think we can do that. I don't think we can take a 90-day pause and come up with some magic rules, and all of a sudden, things will be better. I would suggest that's not the direction McKinney took, that's not the direction Sulphur Springs took, it's not the direction Waukesha Hatchie took, and I don't think that's the direction Greenville should take either. What we need is a vision and a plan and comprehensive action steps for how to get there. So if the city wants to tap the brakes for 90 days before they mash the gas pedal, I'm okay with that. I understand it, I get it. Just please use that time to look at what other cities are doing. Look at the most successful cities around us and emulate their success stories. I think you'll find all these successful cities are supporting and encouraging their artistic communities, and I hope our city government can figure out ways to follow their lead. Thank you.
Thank you.
Barbara Coran.
Barbara?
I'm Barbara Coran, and the important address, well, there's two important addresses. One's 27 Toilley Street, and I actually don't know the address of the other one. I guess if I knew this address, I would know my address across the street, the Beckham Hotel that goes all the way to Lee. I didn't buy those buildings in historic districts, because, and people asked me when I had first bought the Texan, are you going to go for historic designation? And I said, no, I don't want to jump through all those hoops, I don't want to ask every time I want to change a brick, can I put a new brick in, or do I have to go find an old building to find an old brick to put this brick back in? Although I did rebuild the building with old bricks. But that's beside the point, I didn't have to. A lot of people said, tear it down. When I was doing the coffee shop side, that building I gutted, and they said, well, why don't you take the walls down? Because the walls, I thought, were old and needed to be there to keep downtown in the designation that it is. I rebuilt the entire inside. So I think if you trust the owners, the people that have invested in downtown and are putting a lot of money and effort into downtown, they don't want to have a 90-day hold and stop all the excitement and what's going on, just so we can relook at the murals that are happening. I'm sad to say that the last mural didn't even get permission, and if we're stopping giving permission, that mural still would have gone up. It wouldn't have been stopped because of the rule, the moratorium. We still would be in the position that we're in with it. And I'm scared to say that even with the moratorium, there might be a bunch that go up. I won't do it. It's not going on my building without permission, but I know some of the other owners that are bothered, and we might see a bunch that go up in the middle of the night. That's just, could happen. But some of the things I've heard we're worried about are protected speech, and those will also, we can't take them back down. If they go up, and it's protected speech, if it's religious, or we had the whole issue in Michigan, I think, on the Nazi, the guy in the Nazi, a Nazi in a Jewish neighborhood, and Supreme Court said that was fine. I hate the idea, but the Supreme Court says that's what we can do in our country. So if somebody did paint a swastika on a building, I don't think we could take it down. But I think you should trust the business owners, they're not going to do that. If it's going to hurt their business, they're not going to put it on their building, because that would drop, that would send people away, and they're in the interest of making money. They invest the money so they can make money, and it won't make any sense if they're sending people away. Let's see, did I cover everything? Trust me on, I think I've covered everything I had there. So with less than three minutes, I appreciate y'all's time, and thank you very much.
Very good, thank you. Okay, that's all that's given a card. Is there anybody who wishes to speak? If so, please raise your hand. I'm going to pick them this night, because all people are raising their hand over there. Dennis, you want to speak? I thought your hand was up.
Oh, no.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. I just caught a quick glimpse while I've got all these cameras in front of me.
My name is Erica Painter. I live at 4956 County Road 1040 in Greenville. And I'm probably going to seem repetitive after a couple of the other people have spoken, but I wanted to say something. I've been an artist my entire life. I own two businesses here in Greenville. Both of them are members of the Greenville Chamber of Commerce. One is situated just a couple of blocks down from here on Wesley, and the other is downtown on Lee Street, directly across from the Texan Theater. I own an art gallery. I know firsthand the hoops and red tape that has to be gone through to open a business. I've been before the city council countless times in the past to try and fight for what I believe is pertinent to my future and the future of the city and the development here. There's already a process for approval of change, and I don't believe that we need to push for a moratorium or put together a special council to monitor the downtown area. I feel like it is a waste of time and resources, a waste of money. The downtown area has suffered greatly over several decades, and no one took interest in it until it began awakening in the past decade. The new development was brought on because of artists and business owners like myself going through the legal system like anyone else in this city without the need for further policing. A 90-day moratorium won't have much effect on the future, but the result of it will. I believe implementation would only discourage further development and hinder the creative energy. I believe that business owners and property owners will make wise decisions in the choices that they are set before them when it comes to making alterations to their properties, because like Barbara said, we care about bringing business in, we don't want to scare people off. Surrounding area downtowns are thriving because of the inclusive contemporary art amongst the historical buildings, and paintings on brick walls is a practice as old as the structures that are standing. And I thank you so much for giving me a moment to share my thoughts and for taking my concerns into consideration tonight.
Thank you very much. Mayor?
Byron Taylor, I live at 5106 Meadow Brook in Greenville, Texas. I had the opportunity to speak in front of y'all before at a workshop. Not everybody was here, but y'all will know my position. I moved to this town in 2005, I spent a lot of time down here. I really would like to see a show of hands, but you don't even have to do that. But I have spent a lot of time walking every square inch of this downtown. I know every window that's boarded up. I know every piece of graffiti that's been ignored for seven years. The last mural that went up, if we're worried about what our citizens are seeing when they see, come to the Greenville Municipal Auditorium, there's a piece of graffiti in the cubbyhole right next to the new mural that has one inch of pigeon poop that's literally right next to the new mural. The new mural is what's causing this issue. It's not about that. We have so many issues down here, we have 33 square blocks, and we have a very much larger downtown than most cities. And I am a little bit frustrated about how much time I have spent down here, and none of y'all have called me to any meetings. You've given me very little time to be in front of you, to help you, and it's all about you, and it's not about everybody else. And I would like to remind everybody up here that I have bought, we, my partner and I, have bought property in downtown Greenville in an effort to bring it back. And there's a lot of investors down here that have put a lot of money and effort in, and there's some people up here, in my personal opinion, that are making decisions, have no true investment in downtown, including property. And so I just wanted to say that I represent a lot of things here in Greenville, including lots of businesses, and I love all of y'all, I love the city, and I know that y'all are trying to do the right thing in your own minds. But when you start doing things like this, and you start saying bans and moratoriums, that is anti-business, Sabre anti-business. There's a whole lot of things going on up here that's being recorded, and I don't appreciate it, I don't think the business community appreciates it, and I don't think it's very healthy for our community to go back, we're trying to bring a corporation here two or three years from now, and they go look at that silliness that went up here about Sabre coming here and all the comments and everything that was going on up here, that's recorded. Y'all need to remember that. And Merry Christmas.
Christmas, Byron. Anybody else wish to speak? Yes.
Hello, my name is Gail Sprinkle. My residence is 2304 Lang Street in Greenville, and I own the Uptown Forum at 2610 Lee in Greenville, in downtown. I've made a financial investment here in Greenville, and I'm very excited about what's happening here, when I see the energy. The building that I own is beloved by this community, and I have a legacy to uphold of Calico Cat and Janine Cunningham. And I am never going to do anything to that building that is going to bring shame on Janine. We have a rule, and this is a real rule, I'm not making this up, in Uptown Forum, you can use duct tape, but it has to be cute. So I'm not going to put anything hideous on the outside of my building, but I may very well entertain an artist to put a mural on my building. But it's going to be stunning if I do that, and everybody's going to love it. At least, most people will love it. When I was here last week, I talked about having three leases. ... so the development doesn't drive us, and we need a plan in order to do that. And there are many very competent firms that we could hire to do that. And I want us to do that sooner rather than later, because I think that there's a lot of energy downtown, but we really need to channel that. We don't want to control it, we don't want to dominate it, we don't want to depress it, we don't want to regulate it. We want to channel it. I wanted to say, my last thing is about code enforcement, and thank you very much, because I got a call from code enforcement from my talk last week. And I'm very encouraged about that. But I do want to, is my time up?
No, Iowa's keeping the time.
How much more time do I have? Am I over?
You're up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Brian Morgan, to Nob Hill, Greenville. Morgan, I moved my business from Nevada to Greenville and built a new building in Washington and Cape. So I assumed that this city was going into a future direction, where you're going to be redoing ordinances, redoing these buildings downtown, which none of them are for sale. So now I'm hearing you want to do historical district, and you're going to actually mow that right down. I went, that's why I built right there, was because this city was going into the future. And what I'm seeing here, it's not. You're doing freedom of speech, so that's a problem. And the other issue is the fact you want to do moratoriums on stuff, you need to go through the code enforcements on all these buildings that are in really bad shape, you need to deal with that, get those people to do something with those buildings, to move to a different direction, that's what's going on. So that's actually what I want to say. I mean, I purposely moved my business here for that reason, knowing that this was, this area was going in a different direction. And I think what's happening tonight is going in the opposite direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
My name's Lillian McHenry. I live at 428 Country Oaks, Greenville. My husband and I restored an old house downtown Greenville. We lived there for 20 years. We used to walk downtown, there was nobody, no lights, very barren. We waited 20 years, nothing ever happened. We sold. We moved out to Country Oaks. So my question is, now you're talking about a historical district, how many buildings downtown qualify to be historical? Does anybody know? Thank you. I don't think there are many that really qualify for that, and some of the buildings were in deplorable condition. I was really excited when Janine Cunningham had the Calico Cat, and she got so many things started downtown. Now Gail Sprinkle has taken that, other people have moved in. I love coming to downtown. So my question is, the two things that you seem to be concerned about is safety issues I had mentioned, and graffiti, or things that could be considered obscene? Well, I think you've already got things set in place. If a building is not safe, don't you have things set up, planning and zoning, other ordinances, to take care of that? So I'm not sure how historical would help that. And as far as the graffiti, like Ms. Sprinkle and some of the others have mentioned, if you're putting in a million dollars on a building, why would you put something obscene on it? And as far as artistic values of everybody in here, I can guarantee you, if we painted some mural on a building, half of us are going to like it, half of us not going to like it. But I think we can all agree it would be an improvement. So I am against the moratorium, and although I don't have a business downtown, I like to support them. So I hope you take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak?
John Kelson, 6005 Horn Drive. I hesitated because I promised my wife when I walked out, I wasn't going to say anything. I hope she's not watching, or she'll bar the door when more get in the house. But I just, my puzzlement was... But I just, my puzzlement with the whole issue, I don't understand how, why we're doing a historical commission. If the, if the issue truly is art and graffiti and things like that, I just, I don't see how a historical commission is, is the answer. It seems like you're gonna go through a lot of regulations and studying it for ninety days, trying to figure out the best way to, to write a plan for a historical commission, when really what you want is something to deal with art and graffiti. And I'd say first amendment rights, but you can't deal with that. That's, that's already said. But it seemed like two months ago, I was reading, when this first came up, and I don't know if it was in the paper, maybe it was on Facebook, but people were talking about an arts commission. We need some sort of art. And that just seems more appropriate than trying to make everything historical. It's been mentioned, I can only think of two buildings, you know, the courthouse and the church. Other than that, I don't know if anything's, they're all old, but are they really historical value? I can't hardly think of any that are in the area you're talking about. So I just, I wish you would, would, it just doesn't seem like going to a historical commission is the way to fix, if you have problems and want to deal with, what kind of art do we want? Let's form an art commission and, and set up regulations for what kind of art we want. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Anybody else wish to speak? Last chance. All right. At this point, I will close the public hearing. And I'll open up comments to the council members. Jerry, you got anything?
I'm really, this was the recommendations that the appearance of subcommittee. I work with Dan. I think it's a benefit to downtown. Like everyone that owns property down here should be a president, myself.
James?
I think it's a benefit to downtown Greenville. I also had, I think each of us in this room tonight that are citizens of town and pay taxes, we've all got investment, we've all got money in downtown. And so I feel like I do, when I make a vote, I am voting on something that I'm putting money into each year too. And we put a lot of money, and I would put money in the future. But I do consider myself as an owner that way of downtown.
Okay, John?
I basically agree with you, both of you guys, on that same thing. And I have invested interest in downtown as well. True, I'm not a born and bred citizen of Greenville, but I've been here since eighty-five. I've made my home. I've got a lot of, a lot of history here since eighty-five. And I worked to help keep this city going. And as far as Mr. Kelso mentioned, an arts commission, that was brought up several months ago. And that was proven down. Nobody wanted an arts commission either. Because he thought we were trying to tell you what was artsy and what wasn't artsy. So we're trying to come up with something that'll benefit everyone. And I believe in this moratorium to get started.
Let me get around.
I want to thank each and every one of you for coming tonight. And for those of you who not only came, but have the courage to stand up and tell us your thoughts. Eight people, major stakeholders, who have invested their time, their energy, their resources, and their futures in the downtown area of Greenville, Texas. I too am a stakeholder in downtown Greenville, not to the size of those of you who've invested much more than I have invested. I think it's a prudent thing to do. I think we're forming the cart before the horse. I think we must develop a plan. I think it must include the major stakeholders. I think once we develop a plan with those who have, with a great deal of success, who have achieved measures of development, of success, of revitalization, and words go on and on and on, whoever we pick to do that might best be able to help us formulate a plan that would include what we want to become in the future. And so it may be that the moratorium is something that we need to think about, but I'm not sure it's tonight. I think we should, we have, I don't know if I'm allowed to say this, but we are at the point where we're going to ask for assistance to help us create our vision and our plan for downtown Greenville. And I think it behooves us to seek the sage advice of those who have gone before us and who have had great success in helping other downtowns figure out what they want to become and how to do it. I also note that of two-hundred-and-fifty-four counties in the state of Texas, what is this, no more than fifteen counties on this map? And I know that you all may not have this here. Ten or fifteen counties have chosen to become a Texas Historical Commission. It's interesting to note that places like significant historical places, such as Marshall, Texas, Nakadocas, which has extreme historical significance here in Texas, Galveston, Texas, has extreme significance in history. Those venues have chosen not to become a historical, an historical district. So it may be that we need to look into this a little bit more. I do agree with Mr. Rand, because I too have looked into the historical designation. And it is a lot of red tape, a lot of regulation. And we may, should look before we leave, before we become an historical commission designation. So that would be my point.
If we don't vote tonight, what's the impact? The moratorium doesn't go through. Is that what you're asking? I mean, the only thing about not tonight is whether or not we put the moratorium in place for ninety days, starting today.
If we're not going to, if we don't vote on it tonight, then nothing happens and we have to start the whole process all over according to state.
If you want to do a moratorium, that doesn't have any effect on the historic commission process or even like what Holly's talking about with hiring an outside person. Those are all totally separate, have nothing to do with tonight's.
Okay. That answered your question.
Thank you.
Brad?
I too want to thank everybody for coming out here. I know most of you, and I appreciate the investment that y'all have made monetarily, time-wise, and just, just the investment to come down here and speak. I, and I think everyone up here wants our downtown to be a destination place. A destination place for retail, destination place for entertainment, a destination place for food, a destination place for art. I want people to say, hey, we're going to downtown Greenville. And not just, not just people from Greenville, but people from Emory, people from Wolf City, people from, maybe people from Tyler, you know, maybe people farther away. That's what I want. And, and, you know, when, and I think that's what the appearance committee wants. I'm not sure who's on that committee. But I think that's what they're, what they're presenting. I would disagree gently with, with Mr. Evans saying that taxpayer money has gone into downtown, because I don't think it has for the last ten years. I think we've pretty much not spent any money downtown. These people have spent money downtown. And, and so, so the business owners and artists and those people have, have invested in downtown. The city of Greenville has not since the sidewalk rehabilitation project in oh-six or oh-seven. And I think because, well, it's up here, develop the plan for the revitalization of the downtown district area. At least two years in a row, the council has said, we think that needs to change. It's time for the city of Greenville to come forward with a plan, a plan that's probably gonna involve some taxpayer dollars to, to get downtown to that point. I'm not at all worried about Ms. Sprinkle. I'm not at all worried about Ms. Rand or Mr. Landon or, or Erica or those people. I'm a little bit worried about all the vacant buildings in downtown. People who have had buildings, they're not running a business that they're trying to make money and they're squatting on a building and they've sat there for, in some cases, a decade or more and done nothing but allow their, their, their property to rot and deteriorate. And I think Ms. Sprinkle talked about the building next to her. The Rafa Clinic back on Jordan Street has had major problems because of the building next to it that is just deteriorating and dilapidating. And they're trying to, to maintain their building and it's causing problems. So we need a comprehensive plan. I'm very much in favor of a comprehensive plan. And the city manager has provided us with some experts for us to look at hiring. And I think that'll be on the next agenda. For me, the moratorium is a way to not press the stop button, but press the pause button. And, and, and just make sure that we're, that we're moving somewhere. It, it has been an impetus for us to do something. We've been talking about doing something since I got on council. And, and my term's almost over and we haven't done anything yet. And that's disappointing. So to me, this created this community interest and involvement to come down here and say, we want something, we don't necessarily want to, to have a ninety-day moratorium. But to me, a ninety-day moratorium is a, is a small price to pay for what I think we can get done in that ninety days when we have some energy and effort into this. And I do want the stakeholders there. I think Mr. Price laid out a great six-point, six-point, I guess, factors and things that, that should be a part of this plan. Ms. Rand pointed to, to, to the plans that Greenville had in place years ago that we're not really looking at, that we can use as a starting point. So it's not about the moratorium to me. It's about, we need a plan. And, and I, I think that we need to get started on it tonight. And if we have ninety days to do it, then we'll go fast and work hard. So. Cedric?
Oh, yes. I think it's me, Ramsey, and Ramsey, and Mr. Evans. We're pretty much on this committee. And it was brought up in the committee. And once you're in the, once you're all in these private meetings, not private meetings, but committee meetings, everything sounds good to us, the ones who are actually not involved into working with the people from downtown or that don't have a building. So, you know, it sounded good, you know, talk about the paint, how it can get out of control. But, you know, once we sit, once I sit and I listen to the people who actually own buildings, putting in millions of dollars, actually have a true investment, just because we pay taxes, I don't think that, nobody should consider that we have an investment in downtown. I mean, we, like you said, we have builders that code enforcement of not doing nothing. Our people just sitting on buildings. To me, this is, the moratorium is putting a cart before the horse without enforcing the rules and regulations already in place. So I just believe, like Ms. Holly, Ms. Holly's been talking about a plan. I know she's been real adamant about a plan, like over and over, pretty much every time we bring this up, she talks about a plan. The city, we have these rules up here, and I don't know, I don't know if we completed any of them. We probably have, I remember messing up. But we need to put a plan together. A moratorium to me is, like I say, putting a cart before the horse, a waste of time. You all have spoken. We work for you all, despite what we all think of here as individuals. So we need to listen to the majority, to me, the majority that spoke. So I think the moratorium is necessary to talk.
Jerry, you want to say something?
Obviously, I don't have anything else to say, except I do believe, and I think I was the first one on the city council since I've been here, to suggest that this downtown can be and should become a destination for the entire area. And I'm committed to that. But I think a moratorium is necessary to give us some time to decide what we need to do, what needs to be done.
Okay.
But that should be in the, that should be in the plan. There is a plan. We're trying to put a plan together. People putting up paint. Like you said, if you put up anything, to me, if you put any paint up on those buildings, it's an improvement. I mean, I'm in District Six, I'm right down the street. And hell, ain't nobody putting no paint in that building. So, for real, I mean, ain't worry about no paint. You come paint a house, I'm gonna be real happy about it. Anything you want to conquer if you're nuts, you want to put the swastika up, okay. Freedom be, you gonna kill me? But for real, this is, this is like, for real, this is, it's a waste of time. And we're not putting a plan together for this. Let's put a plan together, get the people that's involved downtown and like, see where we go from there.
Okay. I want to address some of the things that were brought up and just give some views that I have on, on comments that were made. And I appreciate everybody coming in and giving us your thoughts and your feelings because it's very important. But one thing that, that it needs to be recognized by those of you that have bought the buildings downtown and you've done them, that if the rest of the city doesn't come down and, and participate in your businesses or your buildings, then you, you've got a thing out there. So what we're looking at, or what I feel we should be looking at, is what does citizens of Greenville want to have happen? And whether it's a historic thing or that it's something more modern, I think that that's, in my mind, that's what we get this committee together for, to come up with citizens in there to say, this is how we want our town to be part of, of this aspect. So I think that part's important. And while Derek talked about comparison of McKinney and, and, you know, how McKinney gets matching funds for, for, they supply that from the city, I can tell you that we also are sitting, paying off debt that previous administrations had. And we're, we've got debt service that we're paying off. Come twenty-twenty-two, then that gets cut by about two million dollars and it makes money available. But I can assure you that having vacant money be able to support a, a art project, I don't think it's realistic gonna happen. At least, I don't think it will. Barbara talked about building owners downtown. I absolutely believe that the building owners that are downtown would very well control their buildings and control what's on there. Where I have a concern is there are buildings downtown that are not owned by the people that are there. They're owned by people that are in Arizona or Alabama or some other place. They bought them years ago for an investment. And we've all seen them just sit idle and deteriorate. And what I'm worried about is that somebody comes and paints something that's obscene and they say, well, you know, that's my freedom of speech. Well, I don't think a swastika or, and I don't think a flag saying this is a better nation, what the United States is, that's not what I think we want in our downtown. And as far as not being able to, there was talk about, some of the people may come out and, and just go ahead and paint them up anyway. If we put the moratorium in place, it's my understanding that we have the right to impact those people. And it would cost them dearly to do that. Brian talked about, you know, he's bought a lot of property and thirty-three square blocks downtown. I think that's a rather large number considering where we're, we're thinking about. But, you know, I appreciate the fact that people are buying property down here. We're trying to get it better. We're trying to make it better. And yes, this council is trying to find ways to be able to put money downtown, improve the sidewalks, improve the roads. We're working all of those issues, even though a lot of you don't seem to think so. And the thing about graffiti and, and, you know, why worry about it? If, if the people that are getting graffiti on their building could care less, then what's the problem as, as far as, you know, putting a ninety-day moratorium, put it on hold? And I find it hard to believe that with businesses that are coming into town, people that are coming to town, trying to shop and everything else, that a ninety-day window would shut everything down. If your whole project and everything that you've got for the future has got to be completed in ninety days and you absolutely couldn't stand having a moratorium, sorry, a committee and a plan to be put together, then I would put question you whether your plan was real, realistic. Because if you're trying to plan a long-term business out here, you're thinking well beyond ninety days. And what we're trying to do is put this moratorium through so that we can get a group of people together that identify what they think they want to see downtown. And it's not something that we're trying to get, that this group will say, well, this is what it ought to be. And then they come to the council. My feeling is, when the group comes forward and, and comes together as a group of citizens, that's what we ought to let them do. The council shouldn't be involved in making those kinds of decisions. We've got a lot of other things that we're worried about. We're trying to work on that. So I think that the moratorium needs to be in place. We need to get the opportunity to get a group of citizens together to identify what they think downtown should look like. And get a group of people that are willing to work together to try and figure out and come up with a plan about how we can all move forward. Because it's not just six or seven businesses in town. There's a lot of people that want to see a lot of people come downtown. So.
I feel that it was, that the citizens had a problem. And this information being out about this moratorium for how long?
Three weeks or so.
Three weeks. We're talking about getting some citizens to come down here and form a committee to decide what needs to go, uh, what needs to go up downtown. You have the citizens right here, the ones who would have, the ones that have a problem with it showed up tonight. And that's three weeks. That's three weeks of looking at the newspaper and finding out what's going up. And you're looking at the people, you're looking at, you all are citizens, right?
Yeah.
Unless you're aliens. So, you're talking about citizens that, um, have a concern about what's going up. They just spoke tonight, they just told you exactly what the heck they want. So what other citizens are you gonna get who didn't show up tonight to tell us about a building where people have an investment interest in? You're still putting the cart before the horse. And you've got buildings, you're talking about buildings that people are just, uh, not fixing up. Well, what are we gonna do about that, birds? You worried about a paint, does somebody gonna come and put some paint on you? Even if you put the moratorium up, and somebody come put the paint on it, how you gonna find that person who put the paint up in, like, are we gonna put cameras on the street?
Okay, anybody have any other questions coming?
I just have, of course.
I know. You just keep talking.
Need to answer.
All right, at this time, I'll entertain a motion. Right now, the city staff recommends the council discuss and consider an enactment of the ordinance establishing a temporary moratorium in the Central Area Zoning District with the completion and second reading of this ordinance. I will entertain a motion to approve that.
No, I'm gonna approve of order 17069, as previously read.
I'll second.
Done motion by Jerry, and second by James. If you vote yes on your, uh, billing there, you vote to go ahead and, uh, implement the moratorium. If you vote no, um, that's not approved.
Now, I have one question while we're, we're in the discussion, Jerry's still right. Um, if, if there is a, if there is a person that wants to go ahead and get a, gets a process started to get a CO or a building permit or something like that, what's the process during this moratorium?
Well, it depends on where they already are in the process. If they've already applied and their, their permit, uh, application working, then there's nothing, that they're grandfathered in. If it's something that's brand new and it needs a wholly permitted application, then, uh, they're required to submit, uh, a request to Doyle Dick. Uh, those are, that's the changes on Section 3, which is on page 3. Uh, and then the council will be required to meet and vote on any waiver, uh, within 10 business days.
Ten or 21.
Uh, maybe 21, let me find it in here.
Twenty-one in some cases and 10 in others.
Oh, yeah, that, that's correct.
So it, it's called a moratorium, but it, it really is just adding a layer of, uh, one additional step for anything anybody would want to do downtown during this 90-day period. It doesn't mean that they can't develop or build, or it just means that they have to go, they have to make an application to council.
Yes, that's correct.
Which is not something we want to be in the business of doing.
Sure.
Future, but for 90 days, uh, while hopefully we're working on the development plan that I think everybody here wants.
Any other comment? Just go ahead.
I would just say that, uh, you know, since I came back here in 1983, I have, uh, watched with great interest many citizens, Janine Cunningham being one of them, who with great zeal attempted to, uh, achieve a meeting of minds with many stakeholders in downtown Greenville. And despite, uh, many, many well-intentioned and goal-oriented people, uh, you know, for those of you who've been here since 1984 until today, you see not, not discrediting anyone and not degrading anyone, but you see what the meeting of the minds has accomplished. From 84 till 19, pardon, 2017, look at what we have. And so, to expect a meeting of the minds with a group of people who have been trying to do this, at least if I've been here back since 1984, uh, I just wonder what is going to be different that has not already occurred since 1984? I just don't, I don't, I don't see how it's gonna, how?
I think I can answer your question. I mean, I have an idea, I think it's a great, I think it's a fantastic question. Um, we have hired, and I've thought about this too, uh, and Barbara brought this up on Facebook and made me think about it. We have, we've hired people before to come through and do, um, and do downtown plans. Um, and, uh, and I don't know who those people were, I think the last one was in 1999 or something, a long, long time ago. Um, back then, we had a dying downtown. Uh, maybe it's almost dead downtown, you know, mostly dead downtown. Uh, and I think now, so maybe the timing wasn't right to come in and say, "Hey, all of your buildings that you can't sell, and nobody wants to drive down here and, and do anything, and it's, it's not just dead, at certain times the week is dead all the time." Uh, maybe that wasn't the right time, um, for, for downtown plan. I think now is a great time for downtown plan because we have some enthusiasm, we have investment, we have people, um, who are willing to work. And so, I think we need to bring a professional in from outside. Um, we, we have momentum now going positive direction, we have positive momentum. And, and I don't think a, a 90-day moratorium stifles that momentum. I don't think it stops anything that's currently happening. I don't even, I don't even know, I don't know that it's necessary. But what it does is, it, it created a sense of urgency, at least up here, to do something that all of you out there want us to do, which is to sit down, hire a, a, uh, a, a downtown development planner, have meetings, talk with you, figure out what we need to do, um, and, uh, and, and develop a, a real plan for downtown. I think it can be an exciting group for our community. I don't think it has to be, uh, something that is negative. And so, uh, you know, I think we have one aspect here we want to do that, that pretty much everybody in this room agrees with. And one aspect, it's a temporary one that, that, that people are, um, are fearful, upset, frustrated about. Don't let the, the temporary, um, get in the way of, of what we want to do that's a long-term, um, good for downtown.
However, it says, "During the period of the moratorium, the city of Greenville intends to achieve the following objectives and goals by adopting new or amended ordinance's regu- or regulations." Number one, consider and adopt an historical district ordinance establishing an historical district covering the entire Central Area Zoning District. Now, who here said that's what they want in downtown Greenville? Who here stepped up and said, "That's what we want? We want to have extra regulation. We want to have an historical district." And as I said, out of the 254 counties, even McKinney doesn't have an historical district. There's only, what, 15 counties in the whole state that have this extra level of regulation and rules and regulations and bricks and colors and facades. That's what we're intending to do, folks, within the next 90 days. Number two, appoint a historical district board. Number three, work with that historical district board and the planning and zoning board to adopt a historical district design manual to govern all alterations to historical structures in the Central Area Zoning District. And number four, protect homeowner and business owner investment downtown and in adjacent neighborhoods by limita- eliminating negative impacts of unregulated alterations. I agree, we all want, uh, negative impacts. We all want a nice area, but to...
Want negative impact?
We want to eliminate, pardon, the negative.
You left that part out.
Thank you, thank you. I think we all are in agreement with that, but to, uh, burden... I mean, what if, what if we don't get a planner hired in 90 days? What are we gonna do at the end of the 90 days? Are we going to say, "Okay, we're gonna have a historical district ordinance, we're gonna become, we're gonna become a member of the Texas Historical Commission"? Is that what we're gonna do in 90 days? And we don't have a planner on board? Are we ready for that?
But, is, is this actually establishing every building downtown as a historical?
The Central Area Zoning District.
Zoning District, yes. To govern in historical structures, not every structure downtown is a historical structure.
Which one?
Basically, it's free of course.
Somebody asked a very good question.
That's gonna be with anything within the business.
I think you're right.
That's gonna be up to, uh, right now, the way that the ordinance is written, it prevents any sort of changes to any building, period.
Thank you.
Within the central area. But, uh, it does talk about, uh, historical building. And if that's something that if the council did put together a historical district, would be a decision of, that, that historical commission, that would then also have to be approved by PNC and the city council.
But if that, you said we had wiggle room and all that, right?
Yeah, well, there's a lot of wiggle room because it, because of the number of steps that come, uh, that are, uh, required to be completed, uh, before the city can exercise that police power to the zoning, uh, authority that it has. Uh, there are many different times, many different ways that, uh, those decisions can be affected and changed.
I think there's a misunderstanding, at least, maybe, and maybe my misunderstanding, I'll admit that upfront, but I don't think that a historical district ordinance necessarily means that, um, we, you can't do, that, that every building is historical and you can't touch any historical building. I think that's the name of some ordinance that doesn't yet have any details to it. So it's a, erodes by any other name. It's just saying that we will adopt an ordinance for the Central Area Zoning District that covers whatever it is that we want it to cover. Uh, I don't think that we're going to, to be telling people that they have to use bricks that are between 1910 and 1922 if they want to redo their building. We could, I guess, if we want to, but that's certainly not, you know, I don't have an appetite for that. I think it's, and, and, and I don't think that, you know, these 73 cities and counties that are listed are the only ones that have any ordinances to deal with their downtown. They're certified local government communities in Texas by the Texas, Texas Historical Commission. I don't know if we want to do that, or what that entails, or, and I'm certainly not intending to decide tonight that we're gonna do whatever it takes to do that. I think what I would like, and what I'm talking about is with the plan, is at the end of this, we have rules and regulations with buy-in from, from, uh, the citizens on, on how our downtown should develop. And, uh, I, I don't, I mean, at the end of it, I don't intend that myself or someone else is going to, um, i- is going to make a decision on every single art. But I do, I do think we need to have maybe some places that are, can be, some places that are, can't be. Um, and that's, I think, within the purview of, of city government. But, I mean, that's all stuff that can be worked out at the time. But I don't think, I, I don't want people automatically in their mind to put in, "Oh, there's a historical district ordinance, so that means everything has to be restored to exactly the way it looked in 1910." That's not, that's not what it means to me, and that's not what I intend. And I don't think that's where we're going, but if it is, I want somebody to tell me because I, that might change my mind.
That is not what I think that, that's in my mind that we're trying to do. And whether we call it historical district ordinance or whatever, it's what I envision is we get this group of people together and they tell us whether they want to, in historic, whether they want to move forward. I'm not looking, and, you know, the words here say historic district ordinance, but we've gotta get a group of people together, and that's what we're proposing, to come up with a plan for downtown. And if we have to change the name of that organization, I don't have a problem with that. I just, I don't think that we ought to get hung up because it says historical district ordinance. Let's figure out what a plan is and where we want to go in the city.
I would think that a consultant who is, uh, who would do this, we're looking at present time, no, you may not agree. I would think a consultant that we're talking about doing would facilitate some of these discussions with the stakeholder. But I think a moratorium is in place. I mean, what if we decided we wanted to do a gaslight history? Because everything that we're doing at this point in time is consistent with that. I mean, I think we need, just, uh, as Brett says, we need a pause to think about what we're doing. I don't know if it's realistic to do this in 90 days, but I don't think that impacts anybody. And I believe downtown, it's too late to become Cat and Trey Days, or Shakespeare in the Park, or whatever, but I believe downtown has some beautiful buildings, and I think it can become a destination for the four or five-county area. It can become the land and that sort of thing. That's my, that's what, that's what I want to listen to. And that's what I feel.
John? Or you were trying to say something? You don't have anything?
I guess, if I had, I forgot it.
I, I, I think that, uh, some of the, um, the, the art has, and, and is, it's on a separate issue. It, it makes this a more emotional issue, uh, because the art is involved. But we have a, you know, we have an overlay district for our I-30 court. We said, "Here's our zoning for the rest of our community." But there's also some additional things that we want along I-30, um, which, by the way, haven't really been enforced much better than downtown, uh, sadly. But, um, we have, we have some additional rules for people that are gonna build out on I-30, um, what they need to do with landscaping, what they need to do with their, their building facades and things like that, when it comes into Greenville, because that's important. And I think if we were going to, to look, you know, at the time those regulations were done, I don't know that there was a moratorium or not, but I know there was a lot of community involvement. There were six, uh, six meetings of like over 200 people that owned property along there and that kind of stuff. And I think it would have been appropriate at the time to say, "We're gonna be careful any, before we put new rules in, and anything, and not allow anything new to come in during this time so that somebody doesn't try to sneak something in underneath the, the gun, um, while we're trying to make this, this big plan and someone, you know, throws a mobile home park in there or something like that, which, uh, is, is kind of a ridiculous example." But, uh, my, my thought is, we're coming up with a plan. Sometime in, in early spring, we're gonna have, hopefully, a, a plan and ordinance that has buy-in from, from people in this community. And it doesn't hurt to push pause, and if it's gonna affect somebody's development, they can come before council and say, "This is what I want to do, and I want to get started right now." And we have the ability to say, "Go right ahead." And, uh, and I just really hope we can get buy-in from, from the downtown community to get, to get a plan that I really think we need and will benefit all of us.
All right, anything else for it, call for vote.
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out where we get the, the people, the citizens from, but we just gonna pick around the people, how we gonna do this?
We're gonna, we're gonna. For people that want to, to work on it. I mean, I'm not gonna just arbitrarily say Joe Schmuckatelli is gonna serve on there. We're gonna, we've gotta get people that are interested. And I'm assuming some of the people from town are gonna want to be on there. But there's other people that have talked to me about a moratorium, whether it ought to be in place or not. No, they didn't show up tonight, but if they talk to the individual council members, and they talk to me, and they talk to everybody else, they've got opinions. So, that's, that's what I'm looking for, is to get people from across the board. Anything else?
Uh, I just have a question for Mr. Ray, because, uh, when the issue came up 10 years ago regarding Park Street becoming a historical district versus a conservation district. Uh, there was considerable discussion about that. And, uh, I still wonder, if we're going to call this historical district, uh, does that, do those words contain any sort of, of, uh...
They're not terms of art.
Okay.
Does that mean we have to only assume it's historical?
No, they, it means the opposite of that. This, uh, whatever committee of the council's put together and, and however they work with stakeholders, they're not limited, uh, to just do a historic, uh, you know, the historic district ordinance that's, uh, uh, propounded by the Texas Historic Commission. Uh, they can do another, uh, other pieces of a plan. And I think it's a great idea.
So they can come together and say, "We like modern art better than we like historic." Is that what that commission could do, or are they stuck by having to do things historic?
If it is an actual historical commission, then no, they're not gonna be able to do that. Uh, but they can, uh, alter the, uh, uh, the design manual, uh, to include, uh, more of that, or, uh, the council can come up, uh, with an incentivizing program or, you know, program that incentivizes other particular types of development or particular groups that they want to come into downtown. Um, in this 90-day period, there's nothing, there's nothing in the moratorium that limits the council on the breadth or the scope of the plan.
Or in the final topic of, of the title of the plan?
No.
So, this is a moratorium to describe then a type of moratorium to be able to address things like the painting on different buildings, um, some other modifications. But if this group gets together and they decide that we want to do something besides the historical district, then that group could, could, in their plan, they could come forward and say, "This is where we think it ought to be."
That's right. There's nothing that i- in this moratorium that limits the ability of the council to, uh, have an increased breadth of plan. And at the end of the 90 days, or 180 days, whatever it is... And at the end of the 90 days or 180 days, whatever it is, if you extend this another 90 days, there's nothing in here that requires the city to have, to vote on just an historical ordinance. And if the city, if it doesn't come before the council because it's not on the agenda because the mayor didn't put it on here and three council members, then there's nothing that requires it to be on there. If I understand your question's right.
I think so. All right, any other comments?
Can this committee be made up of individuals who have a business downtown? Or we just going to, can it be somebody just, oh, it's just, is it going to be just somebody in the neighborhood?
I think it's what the council's going to have to decide based upon the volunteers. I'm not going to say there can only be the people downtown. I'm not going to make that kind of a ruin. It's, it's up to the council when we get people to volunteer to serve on this, to decide use the people and this is the number of people we want.
I would think in the course of developing this ordinance, whatever we call it in this plan, we would have town hall meetings that anybody can come and provide input, just like they are tonight. Not, not just people that we appoint, but that we would just say, hey, you know, and, you know, and it would be facilitated, like Jerry said, with, by professionals who have done this in other places. And we have, I think, some very qualified consultants that are interested in helping us with our downtown. We got to figure out how much they're going to charge and how we're going to pay for it and hire them, but I think that's going to be a very important part of the process.
I also think that if you're trying to get in the committee together, maybe you do it like you did the resolutions committee. Each council member selects someone, get someone from his district.
Well, that's one way to do it. The other thing is, is get people to volunteer to do this.
Correct.
And I'm more inclined to find out people that really want to have a voice on this. All right, right now, I've got a motion by Jerry, seconded by James, to approve the moratorium for a 90-day period. You vote yes, you're approving the moratorium for 90-day period. If you vote no, you're going against it. And it passes on five to two. So it is. And two is Dean. That concludes our meeting. It is eight.
We're going out of open session. We're going to.